Yes.
My work.
Do we want to wait on Mr. Basil?
We'll go ahead and start off everything. We're going to start off with just a recap of what we talked about last time, just to kind of refresh and then jump into the PowerPoint. So last time, we kind of just gave a brief introduction as to what we currently had at the district with ICMA, the 401A 457 plan. We talked about basically our number one objective, which was fiduciary responsibility, trying to get some relief on that. Number two was customer service and employee education, trying to get some more assistance on that end. And then number three and four were plan design flexibility, so employees can make changes to contribution amounts and have some more flexibility within the plan. And then service cost was the fourth item that we talked. So last time, we left off, there was five providers who provided coverage. We kind of narrowed it down to Nationwide, Local, and Nationwide State. And that's what we'll talk about today, is kind of comparing and contrasting those two plans to what we have now. We'll go through the PowerPoint. I've kind of laid it out side by side. So with ICMA, we have 49 investment options in our lineup now. And on average, the cost, total cost to employees, 1.34%. So we'll come in and talk about some examples of how that affects their cost on an annual basis later on. Included in that 1.34, there's a 39, 1.39 basis points admin fee that ICMA charges on their behalf, which is included in that amount. Right now, we have about $665,000 in the plan for all the employees. At that 1.34%, total cost to all the employees throughout the district is about $8,000 is what it's costing the employees to participate in this plan overall. Now, some employees may differ in the differentiation. If they have all their money in index fund, then obviously, they're not going to pay as much, but we took an average. So I provide an example from the consultant's page who took the average.
We don't make a contribution to that.
We don't make a contribution to that at all, which is something to possibly discuss if we decide. We'll talk about what the district contributes, what our costs are, and then if we want to contribute to that. So on this page here, this BCA analysis, what he's done is he's taken the full fund lineup, shown what the total cost is, and then what he did, just to get a good breakdown, is he's distributed the $665,000 equally among all the funds. Because there's no way to narrow it down exactly apples to apples. We just took the 1.34. So when you're looking down that, it's almost the fourth column, you'll notice there's some at 1.37, 0.94, 0.98, some go to 2.25. So once again, the 1.34 is just an average of that entire fund lineup with ICMA at the moment. Now, ICMA does offer managed services, so you can pay an additional four basis points, 0.4% for them to manage your account and pick and select funds, and it costs you an extra 0.4% with ICMA at the moment.
Yeah, they 175 all the employees.
So we'll jump over to Nationwide, Local. What they're proposing is the same sort of combination, 401A, 457 plan combo. They're going to limit it down to 32 investment options, and let the total cost goes down to 0.84% on average. Some are going to be a little bit higher, some below, but overall, the costs have come down. Including that is the same admin fees that are taken out. So for the investment options, they're not charging that much of a premium on that basis points to be inside those funds. So taking the assumptions, $665,000 in plant assets, at that 0.84%, those costs will go down about $3,000 to $5,500 for all the employees with that option. Now, they do offer managed account service, and I'm hoping, once statements get here, we'll talk about that, to see if there's a way we can maybe negotiate to get that down to match at least where ICMA is at. But Nationwide's standpoint at it is that we're managing these funds, we're going to have Morningstar behind them. It almost eliminates the need to have managed service at that point. We won't be promoting that as much. Now, if they still feel unsafe and want to protect themselves, they can pay the additional 0.65% with Nationwide. We'll touch on that a little bit later.
It's actually not real high for a small.
No. I mean, we really did come through David, there's David now. How's it going? Good, good. We're kind of just jumping in, we just started probably about 10 minutes ago.
I apologize for running late, I went to your...
You went to the district's office?
Yeah.
No worries.
They're like, it's not here.
So David Basil, Nationwide rep. This is Rob Dingle, he's been...
Hi, Doug.
...for the district.
Nice to meet you.
Tanya Kennedy, general manager.
Hi.
And Dan Siegel, vice president of board. So we're just talking about right now, we're kind of just jumping into PowerPoint.
Excellent.
And comparing what we have to the two Nationwide options.
Yep.
We just finished with the Nationwide, Local, and one thing we were talking about is the point, 65 on the managed service fee.
Yes.
I touched briefly on it. With us going into a narrow selection, having Morningstar there, almost negate the fact to even offer the managed service.
So if we do get that question from time to time, here's the way I kind of look at it. It is a personal choice. You do have a select few people who would rather completely hands-off, let somebody do it for me option. It is not a feature that you have to take, it's not something that, you know, typically, plan adoption, I see about 30% of active participants will elect to have somebody do it themselves, probably even between 10 and 30, depending on the nature of the plan. Everybody else is either, I'm going to do it myself, or they're just going to go with the target day fund and be...
Target day.
Target day and be happy.
Now, with the managed service, is that open architecture, or is it just limited to those 32s?
So it's limited to the funds, but what it does is, so I'll compare it to a target day fund, for example. Target day fund, it's going to look at your age, and it's going to slowly move over time. Risk-based fund is going to look at your risk, and it's going to always follow that profile. Managed account's going to look at your age and your risk, and it's going to move, and they're going to automatically adjust for you throughout the quarter, but in a proactive basis versus like target day is preset. In 20 years, we know what that allocation is going to look like, right? Managed account, in three quarters, we may not know exactly what the allocation is going to look like, because it's going to depend on the market. It's going to depend on like, maybe if fund manager retires, their research and data suggest the new fund manager, maybe there's some questions there, right? They may move money out of that fund, because they're not sure what this is going to be. So they take it a little proactively. The other piece, we have what we call the My Interactive Retirement Planner, which allows you to put in data. Some people do, some don't. But if you put in the data and you're also using the managed account, and this feature has not actually gone live, it'll go live, I think at the end of March, then they will actually factor that in to adjust your overall risk based off of their things. So there's a value there, it is not something you have to have. I will tell you, not every participant selects it, and it doesn't make sense for every participant.
So is that something that, for example, right now, with ICMA, one thing that we've been lacking is customer service. Obviously, you guys have assigned a rep to us, and you've agreed to two, two times per year, at least minimum.
In fact, we're in Highlands County today, so...
So for example, if Rob wanted to have that conversation, he'd have that conversation with that representative and kind of...
Yeah, so I'll dive in a little deeper. So you would have the conversation with the representative of whether or not you think it makes sense for you. And they can make sense of the adjustments and changes, but Nationwide actually uses a third party, Wellshorn Associates. That way, we're not making the choices. We're not saying, hey, look, look at all these great Nationwide funds, you should only use those. We don't want that to be the case, so we use an independent firm to actually make those allocation decisions. So from a participant's standpoint, you still work with your rep, your rep still talks you through those things, but there's an actual pension advisory firm that actually comes in and does that. Part of why we've done that is because they have industry scale, so they actually can, if they want to call it American Funds, and say, we want to talk about this fund, that fund manager's going to take their call, sit down with them, and go through it, because they may be doing research across the board. Whereas if I call American Funds, they're going to say, who are you? So our rep still is the point of contact, and our rep is still there to provide the education, but they're not the ones who are actually making the management decisions.
So we'll jump over to the state option now. And once again, the fee per investment goes down 0.52%, total investment of $665,000. We see a reduction in the investment fees, we'll talk about that more, because there is a little bit of employer cost on the other side for the district. So for the employees, there'd be a reduction to the $3,400 as a whole if they, if we were using the state Nationwide state. But there's no managed account service with that option. So I provided just a generic example for an employee. Let's assume he has a $40,000 balance with ICMA. There's the fees, his annual total fees at the 1.34. He'd probably pay about $500, $536 at the end of the year on that balance at that assumed rate. If he chose to go with the managed services, it'd be an additional $160 to get him to the total of $696 for the year on plan fees for that employee. Now, there's no FICA payments that the employer is being charged for the 401A contribution on that, current setup what we have with ICMA. But there is some on the 457 side. Same scenario, taking the same percentages we just discussed on the first slide with the Nationwide, Local, total fees with managed services would be $592. So there'd be a reduction of almost $100 with Nationwide. That's if they chose to use the managed service. So without managed service, we're almost looking at a $200 reduction in fees per employee for that employee. And then with the state, here's where we come into a little bit of an issue, is it was only $3,300 in cost to the employees, which is a big savings, but now it's going to cost the district an additional $5,700, because all the contributions going into that 457 are now subject to FICA task on that end. So that employee would only have a total cost of $351. The district's picking up an additional $143 per payroll on the FICA. So really, where it looked like it was a least expensive option for the district, and it really eliminates all the fiduciary responsibility, because you're having the state board kind of take that over and take that responsibility over. It really doesn't provide the customer service we're looking for, it doesn't provide the flexibility, so it's something to consider. It really doesn't hit all the tech, the only one you're checking off is really fiduciary responsibility when you go to the state. It's not saving your cost, and you're not getting customer service.
Yeah, I will say, so the state does offer the managed account as well, but it's kind of, for the representation, I know I talked to Frank about this, because there are five providers, so...
Right. And that's another thing with, so I don't know if this is going to happen, you shouldn't go back. We didn't put that on here, but yeah, so the state does have five providers where, so Rob could choose, Boya, Tanya could choose, T. Rowe Price, so they would be talking to different people. So from a district standpoint, to try and help you guys, it'd make my job very difficult. So that's something else to consider to save.
Do you know on the admin fee on that, we put the 0.4 basis points? We were looking at the zero admin fee.
So, yeah, I wanted you to talk about, because you sent me that paperwork, so I don't know how that plays into what Frank...
Yeah, okay, I was going to ask you.
We can go down that.
Sorry, my... That'll talk very loud. So what we were just discussing is, we have two co-fiduciary products. One is, has an admin fee on it, and typically is going to be reserved for a new, smaller startup plan like this, which is what I believe that they put in place. Looking at it though, because of the 401A, the complexities, we've also talked about using essentially the same thing, but only a zero admin expense ratio, meaning it's just removed. Typically, it's for a plan that's a little bit larger, but you're right, kind of on the cusp, so that's what we were just talking about. If, if that's the direction we want to go, we could explore those two options and make sense of it, and maybe be able to further reduce that even further.
Now, on that documents that you provided, is there kind of a guideline fund lineup with what the cost would be at the end? So they can kind of compare the Nationwide, Local here versus that zero admin fee?
Yeah, we could do that. We could probably put that...
Just to kind of put them side by side and see...
Yeah, so it's basically the same, you would have the same investment options. The difference between the two is one has an admin fee, the other one does not, but the one with the admin fee carries a slightly higher fixed rate. Now, I will tell you, a few years ago, the fixed rate was three and a half, guaranteed at three and a half, and the admin fee was supplementing that. State minimum is one, with interest rates being as low as they've been. They're not going to put that three and a half guarantee behind it, so my perspective is probably not worth the admin fee when you can strip that out. And yes, you'll probably have a slightly lower fixed rate, but you're still not going to be too far off from where you would have been at the beginning. So that's what we... But those are the two core differences. For the analysis they ran, which would be the traditional, what we would usually use, but I sent over some stuff this morning that maybe we can, if that's the direction you want to go, then we can compare the two and make sense of that even further.
So just to highlight on Dan's topic of comment before, let's choose the Nationwide, Local, total fees of $592. The district does not contribute to that, that's solely picked up by the employee out of their fund balance, and then the fees are taken right out of their account, right there. The district on average contributes, I think at the 6% that we're proposing, is about $80,000 total cost on contribution. For the state, that'd be the $80,000 plus the $5,700 in addition, so it'd be an extra five grand. So that's what the employer cost would be on that.
I think this word shows the multiple providers.
So here's a consultant's analysis, they provided a graph, which is a large document you guys have across the board. They did a 30-point scale. They gave Nationwide, Local 22, they gave state a 19. I think the biggest item for the fluctuation in rating was service, they couldn't get any guaranteed service from the state. So once again, you're getting the fiduciary help, but you're not getting any service or flexibility with those plans. So here it does list those five providers compared to the one Nationwide. Fiduciary with the Local, we're getting the Morningstar program. So I don't know if you want to touch on this, how that works a little bit, and how we're going to...
So the Morningstar program, I think most of you probably have heard of Morningstar. What this is designed to do is provide some fiduciary support, especially for a plan where maybe you don't have the resources or the time commitment, or maybe you can't get the employees that you need to properly run a plan, right? So that puts the plan at risk. So the Morningstar, what it's designed to do is create fiduciary standards, meaning investment policy statement, which is something that's always important to have with any plan. That's going to be your document that covers you. If someone were to ever say, well, why did we change from this fund to this fund? That investment policy statement's going to show the criteria that they use to monitor the fund lineups. So Morningstar will actually come in and create all of that. So if there's ever a question as far as fund lineup or a question around that, they're going to be in it hand in hand with you, because they're the ones ultimately making that decision based off the policy statements and all the procedures they have in place. Without that, the district has to do all of that, which is essentially what you have today. So Morningstar will do that. Now, where they are considered a co-fiduciary is they're still not going to be the ones who sit down and ensure that education standards are being met, that participants have access to the education. There's kind of two components of being a fiduciary. One is the investment side, which is typically the one that creates the most noise, but the other side is the education side, making sure employees have the access they need to be prepared for retirement. That's essentially what I look at as Nationwide's role, and that's where Morningstar will be co, because they'll cover your fiduciary, your investment side. And they'll put all the policies and procedures in place.
Talk about mandatory participation.
So this is the one we've kind of been tossing back and forth as far as how we want to design the plan. Now, we have, with the 401A, the IRS has pretty made it pretty restrictive as far as contribution and irrevocable changes. So they don't provide that flexibility in the 401A at all. So we thought we could try and get around that by making it mandatory, but I don't know that that's going to be the case. I think we're going to have to go to the 401A, 457 split. So I think the easiest way, so we don't have the FICA expense, is allocate all of the employee contributions to the 457 plan, and then all the employer contributions will go into the 401 plan. And then we'll have the same lineups mimic on those sides, so that way, there's no variation in lineup or fund between the two.
Yep, same lineup, same fee structure, same login, same website, same statement. Everything's the same, but they're bucketed in two different buckets. We see that a lot in the public sector. Private sector, they would use a 401K, and they would fund here and fund here. Public sector, it's just a different animal, so it's not set up that way. But because of the idea of the 401A, you're starting to see more of those, because it does allow anything that you're putting in, as the district goes, to go in and avoid the FICA, which saves you money, saves additional money.
So right now, the 401A plan is, I mean, once you sign up, it says you can't change. And you know, in life, circumstances change. So if you, you know, you have, contributing 3% right now, let's say, two years later, I want to contribute 5. Well, technically, that's not what the plan allows. So does this plan allow some flexibility at some point?
So, and that's where IRS isn't like choice. They say, if you have choice, that means you're avoiding taxes. That's kind of how they view that, right? So that's why the 401A plans are so restrictive. What we have seen is, it's some plans will set up as a 401A match, meaning whatever the participant puts into the 457, they'll match it into the 401A. So then you have flexibility, because you might be doing 3%, and the district may match X amount on that 3%. But you might bump it up, and that, so you create tiers on the 401A side.
Because on the 457, you have the flexibility. Is that once a year? What is usually, open enrollment? I would say once a year.
Just make it an open enrollment, make it...
Would be as sufficient.
Now, on the 457 side, technically, you can change your deferral as often as you like, or until payroll says enough is enough. But no, technically, you can make those adjustments, but usually, in the 401A, they would have kind of a...
Like a new enrollment, once a year type thing?
Yep.
So the mandatory participation of 1% is recommended, or where?
So I think, going back to that tier, I think we set it up as a tier, as we start off at 1%, we match 1%. Once you put in two, we match two, and we set up tiers, but we set up a requirement where mandatory one, that way, all the employees are participating, getting involved, understanding...
My mandatory would be 1% as a new employee, because right now, under FRS, it's mandatory 3%. So when you start employment at the county or another FRS entity, it's 3%. You don't have a choice for that, it's automatic, no matter if you're in the regular pension or investment plan, FRS. So any thoughts on that 1%? I mean, you've talked...
Yeah. As I said, we talked around the 3%, the 1%, I think 1% at least gets them in the ballgame, gets them started, gets them accustomed to the plan and understanding it. And then as we have Nationwide help us with education, then they'll become more involved and participate.
Yeah, and so here's what I'll say, when I oftentimes will encourage someone to put, even if it's the minimum in there, just to get money flowing, because once they have an account and they're getting statements, and there's the likelihood that they will do more over time to help themselves, has gone up significantly. So when I see the 1% mandatory, it kind of, kind of works both ways sometimes. Sometimes, people will say, well, this is what they're requiring us to do, I'm not doing anything else. But on the flip side, from an education standpoint, we now know who they are, we have their accounts, when we're out, we can reach out to them and try to engage them, and your outcomes tend to grow a little bit faster. Especially if you're able to put a tiered structure in, because it might be like, hey, you're doing one, but if you do six, you get this, and like, I can tell you, like, I know, for the first time in forever, Nationwide just bumped up their 401K match for our employees. It's like, yeah, I got to do that, because I don't want to leave that, you know? So the ideal scenario is if you can get some kind of structure in to tier that, but...
And that may be another thing, instead of calling it mandatory, saying, if you contribute one, we'll give you two, and then dwindle it down to the 6% eventually. At least it gives them that incentive just to at least put that one in, because they're getting double, double their match.
That's what we had to do.
So, once again, instead of calling it a mandatory...
No, we didn't do it mandatory, but we said, if you put one, we'll put two. Then the next one you put in, we'll put...
One, yeah, we keep going.
And you just... And you hope they look at it and say, I don't want to pass that up, right?
Honestly, I had to sit down with employees and say, let's do the math here. You put a buck, I'm putting two, you got three.
You're not going to find that in too many places.
Yeah. The issue for us was disparate treatment.
Yeah.
I don't guess we had that really. Disparate treatment. In other words, that the highly compensated people participate more than the lower compensated. And that was where I looked at it, on a multiple match.
So it's not a popular word, but I'll put it this way, public sector allows you to actually discriminate, meaning you can set up tiers, but that's not really what you're looking to do, thankfully. So in that case, like, yes, some of your higher-compensated employees may do more, but if the standard is the same, you know, 1% gets you 2%, well, that's the same for all employees, and you hope that all employees take action on that. But that's where I look at it, maybe we need to spend more time and provide deeper education, right? So we can go through a list of who's doing what, and sit down and say, okay, well, it seems to be the people in this location are all doing it, and the people over here are not. So the next time we're on site, we need to come over here. So I don't know if you have multiple location, buildings, but we kind of mix that around to make sure that at least everybody's getting the work.
It is also more effective, in my experience, the management sits down, looking at people as well. They may not trust the guy from Nationwide. They don't know you at all.
It's definitely a better outcome when they're hearing it from people that they know and they work with, but that puts us in a capacity then to be more of a true resource, or then as things come up or situations, they know that we can take it a little deeper, but at the same time, they're already getting, got what they need, so...
Just encouraging the initial sign-up.
Yep, you got it.
What I was asking. I didn't want to have to restrict my contribution because my people didn't write for that.
Yeah.
So it's good with them being able to go in the 457 own, and then provide that limitation of 60 days or 90 days. We can kind of just, we can write it in a way that allows them to, you know, if we can encourage them the first year, maybe next year during open enrollment, we push the button again, and then they finally join. So I think the next step is, if you guys all decide, or based on your recommendation, is now make a selection out of these three, whether we want to do something at all, or pick one of the vendors, and then go to the, you know, start going to the drawing board and try and come up with what that perfect plan looks like, and then bring that to you guys for final approval before it goes to the board.
What happens if you have a loan with these people right now?
Good question. If, is it on the 401A side?
Yeah.
Okay, so we could write it in to allow those provisions and assume those loans?
Would the interest or anything go up, or the time period when you would have had it paid off, versus now it's rewritten, and this one up and that one out?
Typically, with ICMA, they give us enough data that we can just assume it based off the, what they have already got in place. What we don't want is to change terms, change rates, all of that, that's, that's not a good scenario.
Okay, so just stay the same, but we'd be with you?
Yep. And do they do their payroll, just loans go payroll?
Loans go ACH.
So that, that would stay the same as well. We would sign up a new ACH, so we'd have it. Hopefully, they would send that over, so we'd even have that, but if not, then we would, we'd sit down with those employees and set that up.
What about a new loan?
New loans would all be ACH, they're typically prime plus two, and you can determine if you want to have one loan, two loans, first time on buyer.
So our plan will determine?
Correct, when we do the plan, Doc, we determine, I think we allow up to five in the current plan.
I'm seeing the industry go more towards one or none, but there's also unforeseeable emergency hardship, so hurricane, something comes through, causes some damage, there are access provisions. You have that control to set those standards. You can offer retirees loans. You can do all kinds of stuff. The other thing I was going to say, and I was hoping she'd be able to be here, but she actually left our other meeting, it was running a little long. Terry Terry is the retirement specialist for Nationwide. Her name is actually Terry Terry, it's T-E-R-R-Y, T-E-R-R-Y. Her name is actually Terry Terry. It's T-E-R-R-Y, T-E-R-R-Y. So we just call her T2. She is a phenomenal rep. She's been in the industry about 20 years. She's been on the 401K side, 457 side. She would be your servicing rep, and she is fantastic.
So you guys service city, sebring?
City, sebring, Highlands County, Highlands County sheriff, clerk. So it's one of those things that, yes, we're saying we'll do the two days, but we're here way more than two days, and it's not that hard. And I know Terry, like, if someone has a question and she's at the sheriff's office, she'll build it in her schedule to make sure she's either meeting with them before or after on her way out. So it's, it's not like if we're not here, we're just not here.
From the employee standpoint, let's say we decide to go with Nationwide. The transition, how does that all occur and how does that affect the employee?
Yeah, so it's going to kind of depend on when we dig into the documents, total scope, total amount of participants impacted. There's some data sharing between the two firms. Typically what would happen is we do what we call a one-day blackout. But ICMA typically does a five-day, meaning everything will go black in the account. They'll liquidate, they'll send it over to Nationwide, and then it'll all go live on our end within that time.
Is there any time in the month or year that you can do that? Or just if we, if this is a prebuyer board, then you could say, what, 30 days after that?
Usually 60 is kind of minimum, and that's just because that's, ICMA is usually going to ask for that kind of time. Usually it's 90. That's typically what I would see is about 90.
90 days to get it all done?
But the other thing that we've been able to do and we've had success doing, depending on the amount of employees, we could even set it up to where I have Terry come on site and work with each of the employees and move them over one by one herself. And that seems cumbersome, but what's great about it is they're getting firsthand education on their new choices, and they're able to do all that right up front instead of just it happens and they get a letter and then they have to ask questions on what's going on. In fact, what we're doing at the sheriff's office today, we're doing presentations because they just moved from Mass Mutual and Nationwide to the Florida Sheriff's Association Plan, which is also Nationwide. So we took our own Nationwide accounts and moved them to this plan and the Mass Mutual accounts. So we're onsite over there conducting meetings to talk through with the employees, make sure they understand what the changes are, what's happening, how it impacts them, the benefits. And obviously, we try to play up like the sheriff's office put a lot of thought into so that the HR staff can get a win, which they don't always get, so...
They'd be best of all worlds, really.
So we can do those meetings, but we can also do those meetings and sit down with the employees and move them over.
You could do that, that would...
I know usually my reps are like, "Man, that's a lot. What are you doing?"
That sounds like a lot.
But what I like about is your employees would then build a connection right up front. They'll know who to go to, they know who their resource is.
So she would set up the account as well for the employee? I mean, username, password, get everything set up? Because we do have, I mean, we have staff that don't normally use computers on a day-to-day basis either, you know?
Yep.
That, that would be a benefit.
Yeah, so what, when we do online enrollment, it actually would send you a letter and say, "So-and-so has enrolled for X amount." So as long as you receive that letter and you can take that and set up on your system, then we can do it that way. And then once we set up the online enrollment, you can turn around and set up their account for them. Each meeting is probably about 25 minutes.
Do you guys have any other questions for David while you're here? I know the loans was a good question. That was coming from employees.
Loans are, I will say, a little more challenging if you do the one-by-one setup. So I will, so it could be that we exclude the people from, that have loans from that process, and then we have the rest of them automatically moved over. But there's ways around it, so... Sound good?
Sounds good.
All right, well, I appreciate the time and I appreciate you understanding that I went to the wrong location. I was already cutting it close, let's just be honest, but...
You did the same thing. I was, I went to the wrong place, of course, maybe.
No, I feel better. You have my card if you have any questions. I know you probably have more of a formal committee structure, so whatever your protocol is, by all means, feel free to call me. We have an answer.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Bye.
Thank you. I guess our next step would be for you guys to give us a recommendation as to how you want to move forward.
Pretty much a strong love. Wouldn't make sense not to do it.
Well, I want out of ICMA. They haven't done it. They sent me another text today. You got to give your account some love. You know, and I'm like, "You already recommended that I take your advice." And I said, "No, I don't want no of that."
Right.
You know, I feel I've done good, and I asked for paper trail. They won't do it. Gets on her phone and sends me an email that let me print two of them. I haven't gotten another statement since then. So I'm like with them. And if, you know, they're not going to change our term or charge us a higher rate, the switch comp should be paid up, done in, in a year.
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't want to go through that nor that.
No, no. And that's the biggest thing I've gotten from employees is making sure the transition's pretty seamless and that they're involved and understand what's going on. So we'll make sure we do our part from management to relate the information to them and explain to them all the benefits.
That's what I was saying. I'm thinking Chelsea's going to have to sit there with every employee, and I'm thinking that's a big deal, but when you said that, I was like, "That's a slant up."
So is this going to be mandatory 1% for all employees?
Well, we have to talk about that internally. And I, I do like that idea. I do like it a mandatory. And 1% would not be, to me, it wouldn't be detrimental, but it opens a door for them to increase that at some point in the future.
We would leave the 2% mandatory? I guess that's what we were talking about.
We got to talk about, but I'm, I'm in favor, at least for right now, going with the Nationwide Local.
Yeah, I agree.
So what I'll do is I'll work with David on the local side and give you the two proposals. The one that we have here with the admin fee, and then they also just emailed today, which is part of that packet, that no admin fee at all. So from .84 could possibly go down to .65 or, you know, it should be a reduction.
We don't have it, right?
He's got a, he's got a small brochure, so it was at least two documents here.
Yeah, I did see that.
Freedom Pro, which says no admin fee. So that would be the one that he's proposing.
Oh, it's over there on the table, okay. So this one?
On the back of this document here, it kind of gives you examples of fund lineups and then the no admin fee across the board. So you see, most of the fees are going down to .65, 64, 89. So once again, you're getting another reduction by allowing us to join that, that type of plan. So we'll bring you both, but it seems like this, by him allowing us to join this at our tier, would probably be our best bet to avoid that admin fee.
How many employees do we have?
I think we have 28 right now. There's only, we have 31 full-time. There's three that are not participating. We do have a good participation ratio. So once again, I don't, I don't know that we have to call it mandatory, but just making it lucrative enough for them at 1 for 2 may cause them, and going through this whole process with a new provider, having that face-to-face interaction, come and sit with them and creating your count may be enough.
It might be without that mandatory.
Correct.
You can always go back and borrow, you know, it's not like it's gone.
What about vesting? Did we talk about vesting?
We did talk about it last time, so last time, the consensus was our current vesting schedule is 50, 100. So first year 50, second year 100. We tossed the idea around of maybe going four years out, so 25, 50, 75, 100. You guys felt that that wasn't necessary. You kind of just said, "Stick with the 50, 100."
I'm okay with that.
The further you move it out, the harder it is to sell to the guys that aren't participating now, so you don't really want to do anything to hurt that.
So we kept the vesting schedule, and last time we did discuss loans to, we do a lot for 5 now. And you guys really didn't have a...
I, I think we should allow for a loan.
I think so.
Do we have to put criteria to it or just, I mean, do we have to put some sort of emergency criteria to it? No, we can just...
A lot of them will say you can only have one loan, but you can get as many as you want. I hear you're in advance every time you want, you only have one loan to back, so...
Right, you can keep refinancing it or changing the balance, which once again, negates the fact, so...
It kind of helps your payment schedule. Makes it more user-friendly for your borrowing, because you don't have to buy an ACH every month.
So we can bring that back too. We'll, we'll see if that's the case.
I think 1 is fine, but you have any opinion on that? I mean, we should allow for in the case it's needed.
To Rob's point, if you have that one, for them to be able to sit down with Terry or Nationwide and understand every time you refinance that, there'll just be, your interest is changing, your term's changing, your interest changing, you're paying double taxation because you're paying taxing to it when you take it out.
That's right.
So the education comes back to be a big thing too. So hopefully that's another deterrent for them to not get into some sort of cycle with the loan issue.
You don't want to make it too easy. I mean, they can get it if they have to, but you're better off not.
Now, we still have employees in the, excuse me, we have employees that have been terminated still in this plan. Is that correct? We still have, meaning they, they didn't transfer their assets. So do we know how many? As of, I know you probably haven't looked at it in a little while, but we have a few employees that are former employees.
Yeah, they can keep the money part from that.
They can keep it in there, but there's no requirement that they transfer assets to another plan. That's, we might have to address those people. We, we wouldn't want to carry over those, those former employees into the new plan. I would say that they would, they need to be responsible in that 90-day period to transfer their assets.
Yeah, they can move it to another A or something.
Yeah, to another IR, yeah.
Yeah, to another qualified plan for sure. So I'll look into that too and see if there's any wording that we can put into the plan after termination. They get six months to move the assets or some sort of language to that.
Nationwide actually may be...
Nationwide will probably take it in uniform, yeah.
Move it in order there. That's what they did for me.
Don't you have a certain amount of time to roll it into another one without getting in that 60 days?
I don't believe there's a penalty for when you're moving. As long as it's a qualified plan, you can...
And you go into one, but you got a timeframe. At least it used to be. Yeah, it used to be.
It would have to be part of your planned documents.
Pardon?
It would have to be part of your planned documents that you're in there.
Because when you quit a job or you get fired, you know, most of the time you're going to take that money, but you got to put it in something else without...
Once you take it out.
Once you take it out, yeah.
Let's see, right now, the former employees letting it sit.
Right, they never take it out.
We need to, we need to address that.
With Julian, uh...
No, and all that stuff that I originally got. When I seen his name, I'm like, "Jesus, he should have moved it," but he's moving a lot now.
Yeah, he is.
Now he's in where, Machulos? Somewhere down that way.
So I'll work with David, expect you guys another day for, probably be our final meeting. I'll come back with what we think is the best plan design, best plan option. We'll go into with a 6%, 5% change from 5 to 6. There may be some changes on loan.
Just show the financial part of that. It wouldn't cost the district extra, but...
You mean a 6% match?
Yes, 6% match versus the 5.
Going up from the 5, and then people will have choice to go right then.
Okay.